Good morning. I'm going to call to order the regular board meeting on May 16th at 9:31 in Mark's Hall. Russell, would you lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please?
Our heavenly Father, please guide us this morning and strengthen us as we work toward a tough decisions for the park and Lord bless us with the knowledge to make this meeting productive. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Kathy, can I have the roll call, please?
Mary Chandler?
Here.
Lori Dalton? Kathy Gregory? Here. Todd Lombardi?
Here.
Russell McAllister?
Here.
Louis Nichols?
Here.
Pete Price? Sandy Semenich?
Here.
Wayne Trotter?
Here.
Okay, can I have the residents' comments, please?
Good morning, Sandy Stevens, 1814 Minnesota Avenue. I'm here to talk about bingo. Since the board has taken it over, we have one woman that comes here and it's been coming here for maybe three or three years or as long as I've known her. And she's not a resident, yes. But I was, it came out that someone complained about it last night and saying that she doesn't live here, she shouldn't be here. And I said, well, she's, she says, if she's a resident, you got to get her a card. She's got to be staying with you. I understand all that. I've been here a long, long time. Now, what's a visitor? Can a visitor come? If someone's visiting me for the day, could a visitor come? I wish some way it can get clarified. This, like I said, this woman's been coming. When they go down to 18, 19, and she's there, they play bingo. And so it's not that this bingo was open up to the public in no way, shape, or form. She is a guest of, I don't, I'm not going to say anybody's. She's a guest with, with, with some of the residents here. She works at, I'm not even going to say. She came, had a late night, so she texted me and said, buy my cards for me. I'll just pick them up on the way in so I don't disrupt anything, which I did. And she picked up her cards. She couldn't play the, what do you call it, progressive bingo? She said, don't buy any progressive. So we, we've done this a couple of times when she got out of work late. I need a decision because it, it's, to me, of course, I'm a little different than a lot of people. I'm very loving and caring and if someone's there that needs a little help, I, I'm more than happy to help them. But I, if I can get a decision, I will, I will tell her she can't come anymore if that's what you decide. In the winter and months, people come in with guests left and right. But I was told that you have to go to the office and get a visit or guess, guess card. Am I done? But please make a decision on that and let me know as soon as possible. I am not stopping the woman from coming until I get an answer. Thank you.
Sandy, would you also give your name and address? I don't think you did that good.
I did.
Yeah, I will get back to you on that because I want to clarify the visitors and
I guess.
I'm almost positive if you're a guest, you have to be here for 30 days.
Right.
A visitor, so let me clarify that.
Yeah, if you let me know that, then we can go by that rule and, and we'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
I think we're opening doors though to get in trouble if we have visitors.
Well, getting in trouble with who?
The state.
No, that's not.
Oh, yeah.
Other, other parks and recreation let everybody in?
I don't care about the other parks and recreations.
Okay, just let me know one way or the other.
Any other resident comments? Hearing none?
Are you taking them from Zoom?
I'm sorry.
Are you taking them from Zoom?
Oh, yes.
Good morning, Dottie Dear Wester, 1804 Ohio. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead, Dottie.
Okay, I just logged in now, so the, I don't know what was said before. But one comment I wanted to make at the last meeting, there was discussion about the beautification club having space on the bulletin board. And I wanted to advocate that they go on the list to have space because there is limited space. And there are other clubs that have been waiting, like the travel club has been waiting over a year to have a location on the bulletin board. So wanted to, I didn't see that on the agenda, but I wanted to bring that up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other resident comments? Do any of the trustees want to respond to the comments that have been made? And Dottie, on the space on the bulletin boards, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I did not look into that last week.
No, no problem. I just wanted to keep it on the, the comment section.
Thank you. Okay, well, going through the approval of minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes for the May 2nd Board of Trustees meeting?
So move.
Second.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against, say nay. Minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the May 2nd Board of Trustees workshop?
I'll move.
Is that, is that Louis?
Yeah.
Okay, Louis and Todd. Are there any corrections to those minutes? All those in favor approving the minutes of May 2nd, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. Is there a motion to approve the emergency board meeting held on April 11th?
Make motion.
Same.
Okay.
Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor saying approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Those against, nay. Minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the joint trailer states fire control district slash the trailer states park and recreation district meeting held on May 3rd, 2022?
True.
Second.
Okay. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Yes.
And?
Okay. On page, on the last page, which would be page two of the minutes, there was an omission. Under the resident comments and questions, I'm going to read what was omitted.
I'm, I'm sorry, where, where are you at?
It's on page two, the second page of the minutes under resident comments and questions.
Okay.
What was omitted was the following. Mary Trotter asked if the entire treasure barn volunteers were subject to sunshine law. Mark stated only the officers were subject to the sunshine law.
Okay. Who's second? Louis, did you second that?
Todd didn't.
I think I seconded.
Todd did it.
Who made the motion?
Russell, I did.
So would you re make your motion to amend it to include the statement that was just read?
Did you remote the statement?
Mary Trotter asked, I don't know, get the entire board.
I need to read the whole thing. That's.
No, it was omitted, so just make your motion to include what was omitted.
I'll just make a motion to include what was omitted from the fire hall town meeting, joint meeting.
Then you'll make those corrections. All those in favor approving, I already did that, didn't I?
No.
No, all those in favor approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Minutes are approved. Okay, could we have the report of the treasurer, please?
Yes, the checking account balance, $11,578.03. The money market, $1,242,918.03.
Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
I make a motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor approving the treasurer's report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, nay. Report is approved. Do we have any bills?
I have one bill from Blalock Walters for $192.50 and it's related to 1611 Michigan.
1611 Michigan. Do I have a motion to approve the 192.50 from Blalock Walters?
Actually, we just need a second. Mary made the motion, we need to second.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, did we see an end to this?
I have already talked to Mr. Barnaby and they are in discussion right now about the settlement. And that's what this 192.50 is.
Okay.
All in favor of approving the 192.50, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Motion is passed. Now, we have no staff or attorney trustee comments. Can I have the informational reports from the trustees? Kathy?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Since the last meeting, been trying to understand this whole movie umbrella license. This is quite something. We do now have a copy of the license and very sketchy directions on how to use this. What I've learned is that in order to watch a movie, there's three steps you have to follow. You must have a streaming service like Paramount Plus or a cable subscription to watch anything. Nothing is free. So what we paid for was to be legal under the copyright law. That's what we paid for. That's all it was. And then you had to go into the list of distributors to find out if that, like Warner Brothers or TriStar, is under the umbrella license. That's step two. And then you have to go back to the movie and figure out how do you watch it? And most of them either have to rent or buy through Amazon or you have to have like a Paramount Plus or a Netflix or Hulu or something like that. Now, I do have Paramount Plus and we can use it, I can use it anywhere. But nothing is free unless you want to watch really, really old, really old movies. So I'm still working on it as my hope that I can find something that's under what I already have to watch it because I can put it on my laptop. It's really simple to do. But this is a process. I have emailed this information to TJ and to Mary as well. The drop down date to cancel this subscription. I have the dates. I will give it to them so that we can get out of this. Because it's over $2,000. And we've done this twice now and it's expensive. So I'm still working on it and I hope to watch, have some movies this summer. So.
Most of the movies were held up at the 10 property. How is that going to work if it's a streaming?
Well, if it's on your laptop, then, because you have to show it on it, on a, on a laptop or a computer. You can have that. Once you get, if you have like a Netflix or Hulu or Paramount Plus subscription, as long as you type it in and put in your membership number, you can, you can, you can watch a movie on your phone if you have the app. So it's very simple to do that. It's very transportable. It's just that you have to pay for this. So it's, and I couldn't figure out, how do you watch a movie? And then I realized, oh, that happens. This, but it's not that difficult, but it's just trying to find movies that somebody would like to watch.
I guess I still don't quite get it is, don't you have to stream it? I mean, like if you're going to use your laptop at the 10, you still have to have an internet connection to stream it.
Right, you have to. So I mean, we're, we're going to use the large hall.
Okay.
And that's fine. We can, we can use the large hall. And if I can find some movies that people would like to watch, the goal is maybe to do it the day after Wednesday bingo, so the hall's already set up. All we have to do is move the tables aside so everybody can see the screen. It's not a really big process to do. But it's just trying to figure out how I can, I can show something. So if anybody knows how to do this and maybe I'm missing a step, I am more than willing to get help here because I would like to use it because it was a lot of money.
Uh, will you be bringing that back to the next board meeting or is that time enough?
That should be fine.
And how long does our, does this last? The amount of money we've already spent?
Um.
Yeah, when's the cancellation?
It goes up, it's in November is when we have to notify them that we are done. You can, you can cancel anytime, but it's, it goes from a year.
It's not prorated or anything. You're not going to get your money back?
No, we're locked in. That's why I want to use it. It's, it's a lot, it was over $2,000. Just that, you know, we can, we can legally show movies. Because everything is copyrighted and that's all we're doing. We have, we are, we are legal. That's all.
Todd?
Uh, the painting is, uh, done by the contractors. It is complete. The guys still have some painting to do on stuff that was not in the contract. And then I've added a couple other things in like the benches, things like that. So, uh, getting, getting things painted, I think it looks pretty good. Most people are happy with it. Uh, we've got an air conditioner down right now in the activity center. Waiting on one more quote on that. Hopefully have that in this week and it sounds like they can get on it pretty quick. So that, that should be fixed pretty good. Uh, storage lot is, uh, going, going well. We still have open spots, mostly 20 foot spots. There's a 150 foot spot, but it's supposed to be filled on Wednesday. And then the Marina, Paula resigned as the dock master, so currently I'm going to take that over at this time. And, uh, I'm trying to get it on the same format as what I've got the storage lot on. So hopefully things will be a little easier in there too.
What's the, excuse me, what's the cost on that AC unit for that, for over there? What's the average cost for?
I don't know yet. We're still waiting on the one quote. We've got one quote by a guy for like 67 that doesn't want to use a permit and all that, so he's kind of out. So, um, we also have some roof repairs we have to do with the same thing. It sounds like it's going to be right around 8,000 to 9,000.
Easily with the run.
We've already got that budgeted for one of those?
Yes. Did it? Yep, I got, Louis?
As always, working through a few complaints. But the one thing I still want to reiterate, and I think we need to consider some board action is to get the resident profile sheets updated. And I think I want to bring a workshop item next meeting for actions we can take to, to demand people, whether it's through deactivating fobs or, or the fine system. But these sheets got to be updated. This is becoming very problematic.
You bring that in for the next meeting?
I will.
Did it?
Yep.
Russell?
The, uh, the sweep is going very well in the park. A lot of people have gotten their citations and they are cleaning up. Those that aren't cleaning up, I'm going to go ahead and send them letters from the office. So if we have to, if the code enforcement can't get anything done other than just giving them fines, then we'll address that with their 15 day notice and then the attorneys. Uh, they do seem to be getting some response from people throughout the park on the sweep. It's not as fast as they thought it was going to be. So they are, they're getting behind with the other places that they had the sweep going. So we're kind of, they've kind of slowed down a little bit on us. They have started other parks to do the sweep. So it kind of put us behind too, just with everybody else. But they are handing, they are going to come back and hand out fines for the ones that aren't making the improvements. And those are the ones that I'm also going to hit with the letters from the park. So one way or the other, we're going to start cleaning things up, whether it means going to court with the attorney or, uh, hounding code enforcement so much that they get tired of our park. The violations and the fines that the park's going to set up. Do we have any information on whether these fines or when they'll be applicable for us to start doing?
That's my second thought.
Oh, good, good. So as long as Dwayne's taking care of that conversation, I do have some thank yous for people who have written me letters and emails and everything thanking us for what we are trying to do with the park as far as cleaning it up. It is hard because so many people have been here so long that things have gotten messed up and not taken care of. That's really, that's really all I have concern for it. The yards are starting to get tall. So please, if you'll address that, make sure that your people are mowing so we don't have to call you or them. And that's it. Dogs, I'm not going to say anything about the dogs. That's an endless battle. But thank everybody who is concerned about their neighbors having dogs.
I actually got a text message showing that my yard wasn't mowed.
Thank you.
Should have came from the South Trustee, but somehow it came from you. No, I only have two items. Was that it, Russell?
Yes.
I only have two items. One on the fine schedule. I'll bring that to the next board meeting with the comments that the district council has incorporated in there. I didn't want to bring it into this meeting because I am really wanting to get the, the Marina bond financing and everything else done. I don't know how long that's going to take. The second issue that I have here is I've received a ARC permit for a Mr. Thomas Missler? Sorry about that. 2319 Pennsylvania to replace the existing dock. That has to be approved by the board in accordance with exhibit A, the different additions and stuff. Can I get that approved? It was down here by Mike Neal. The only thing I'm concerned about is I didn't see anything with the county permits.
We don't have any drawings or anything from him either.
No.
I'll, I was going to contact him this afternoon or tomorrow and ask that he gets the drawings to us so we can approve it.
Okay.
That's basically just turned in at the end of the week. Last week. Wasn't a whole lot of time to go over and talk about it.
So then I'm going to not ask for this to be approved until you get back to me for, with that information.
Yeah.
Because I don't see a thing from the county either.
No.
I thought you had to.
I was going to contact you and tell them that we need their drawings and he needs to secure his county permits.
Okay, I will withdraw that. And that's all that I had. Uh, see, Mary?
Um, I've got a majority of the agenda items, so you'll get my updates then.
Sandy? Did I lose you, Sandy? Okay. We don't have any standing committees, no old business and the new business jumping in there is the POW flags?
Yes, yep. I make them.
I'll haul it. Uh, Mary, excuse me, Sandy, just jump back on.
Okay.
Um, yes, I would like to say that I'm pleased for the people to keep me informed of any deaths or hospitalizations that they have, that they know for sure. And my number is 309-945-6128. And I would like to thank again Betty Bell for her special assistance that she gives to me during this time.
Great, thank you. Okay, jump back to the POW flags, Mary?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the placement of donated POW flags on the flag poles by the office, by the post office, the beach, the Marina and the fire station as discussed at the workshop on May 2nd, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor approving the motion is red, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. Motion is approved. Uh, the second item there is the disaster plan. Todd?
Okay. Make motion to approve the disaster plan.
Yep, read it just as you've got it stated there on, on the, on your sheet.
Show me where, oh, okay.
Should have been the second page.
Nope, it's not.
It's in the middle of the packet.
All right. Make motion to approve the changes to the disaster plan. PP 20, as discussed in the workshop on May 2nd, 2022.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, there was some changes made and, um, that came in late from the Manatee County emergency management. And, um, I would like to make note of those. I, TJ gave you guys all a copy of them. There were minor wording changes.
Looks like it was just a telephone number change.
A telephone number and the word level because we use zone and it's confusing against flood zones. So that, then added a telephone number. So, yeah, it was just all real minor changes that they added. Insert, we inserted a strong and reinforced building into a statement. So all real minor stuff, nothing major at all.
That's from the county?
Yeah, that was from, um, the emergency management.
Yeah.
I sent it over to him for, for review.
So would you restate your motion, including the changes of the items that you just mentioned?
Okay. Make motion to approve the I don't have it in mind. Make a motion to approve the changes to disaster preparedness plan PP 20, as discussed in the workshop.
And amended today.
And amended today, on May 16th, 2020.
All those in favor approving the motion is red or amended, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. Motion is approved. Okay, any clubs and organizations?
This is Dottie.
Yeah.
Yes, Dottie Dear Wester, 1804 Ohio Avenue. And I just want to thank the board, excuse me, the trustees for approving the POW flags to pay, post on our, on trailer estates. And we'll do the official raising of the one by the office on Veterans Day. And the computer club is same as as before. We continue to do tech support throughout the summer and contact information is on our website. Thank you.
Sandy Stevens, 1814 Minnesota Avenue, representing the Beautification Club. We have three things for next season. January 29th will be the, at 1:00 PM, TE Home Tours, here, tours. It's $15 a ticket. February 21st, Mardi Gras, that's a one of our entertainers that we had before, and I just don't have their name, but they're very, very good. And that's $15. And a tea party luncheon on March 7th, 2023. And that's, these are all set in stone. The deposits have been paid, everything's been done. And we will, we will start selling tickets in September so we know we can go through with these.
Sandy, can I just ask a question? I'm sorry. The date at the Mardi Gras party was what, February what?
Mardi Gras?
Yeah.
21st.
Thank you, sorry.
Trying to think. Okay. I received this letter, and I think the board is too. I know, I'm not saying names. It says it was addressed to the TE Beautification Club from a resident with something to say about some damage being done around their corner or something. And the reason why I'm bringing this out because we're still in the thoughts of the residents that we count as a, we count, the Beautification Club counts. We're not thrown in the you know, gutter. If this person who sent this letter or had this letter passed out to the Beautification Club, the board and the Arc Club, which I didn't really know what they could do, but it means something to me and to the rest of the Beautification Club that the residents will always feel that we are part of this park. Even though we're called a club now. But that, I wanted to bring that out and let everybody know that. Of course, we can't help them with the thing, but they're, they think we're here to help and that's what we're here for, to help this park. And can I say one more thing about bingo or my out of out of thing? Because I found it on this, that maybe help you some steps. It's section, it's bingo, it's section one. A mission to bingo is by district identification card or as a guest of a person displaying a current district identification. So please still give me your opinion.
Does that happen to be your letter that you received? Is that on a white fence?
Yeah, yeah.
The North trustee will take care of that.
Yes, I understand that, but I just wanted to, made me feel great because the residents are still recognizing us as an asset to this park.
Maybe you can, maybe you can loan them the money for their survey.
For the what?
For their survey.
Russell said he talked.
What survey?
For their property to make sure that.
Loan them the money.
Huh? Yeah, yeah. Hey, nice gesture.
This is a nice gesture, but we have to earn the money. But we wouldn't be, I'm going to just bring this out to you. We're trying very hard to raise all our money that we need, but we won't see any funds until maybe towards the end of '23. And then we'll be back and ask you what you need done and to help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Is it okay for me to ask a question at this point? This is Mary.
Yes, because I'm going to ask one also, go ahead.
Okay. Lori isn't able to be here today and I know, I think once or twice she brought up and we never really made a decision as a board about the February 21st room reservation from the Beautification Committee. That room reservation, that date and time was freed up as a subcommittee of the board. We didn't allow people who previously reserved the room. We kind of told them they couldn't have the room because the committee had priority because they were a subcommittee of the board. So we haven't, still haven't made the decision. You know, since the committee is not as resigned, what obligation do we have to let the people who previously booked the room have it back? Or allow the Beautification Club to continue to use the room? There were two different events that were canceled on that date so that the committee could have that room.
My opinion is as if nobody else, any club, organization or individual has requested that time, then I don't see why it can't be offered the same as what it was.
That's, that's fine. We just haven't made that formal decision about whether or not we're going to allow the clubs that have previously booked the room to have it back. And if that's what, if we're not going to, that's fine. I just want something official on the books.
Yeah, to me, it's just a scheduling. If there was other requests for it, then we'd have the, that would have been a Lori decision to go ahead and see what we got. But no, I don't see any reason not to allow that if there's no other reservations being requested.
Thank you.
Any other clubs and organizations? Now, the question I want to add, Dottie, are you still on?
Yes, I am. It takes me a minute to unmute.
Okay. I have received a request from Mississippi Serbia District 4 County Commissioner regarding a number of veterans that Trailer Estates has. Can I get with you sometime this week to give her a response?
Well, I'm in Minnesota right now, but I do have that. I have a database of veterans who have attended previous events.
Okay.
And I can go back and look at my roster and then get back to you on that. Can I do that by email or do I need to do it by phone or how do you want me to do that?
No, we can do it by email because I'm going to have to get back to her in a short period of time to say how many veterans we have and who would like to participate in this event.
Okay, all right, I'll do that.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there's no other clubs and organizations, I'm going to recess the Board of Trustees board meeting at 10, I've got 1010 on the big clock. And move right into the Board of Trustees Workshop. And I got to get myself together here. Okay, I'm going to call the order, the Board of Trustees Workshop for May 16th at 10:11 Darren Marks Hall. Are there any other items that need to be added to the workshop agenda? Hearing none.
Dwayne?
Yeah.
Mary? I would like to add insurance coverage for the fire hall that will be taking possession of on July 1st.
Okay. Any other items? Hearing none, first item we have is the recurring workshop agenda for the seawall repair. Mary?
Yep, I had sent out some information for TJ to give all of you. So hopefully you have a sheet, it's got three items on it that speaks to this agenda item. I'll give you.
Three items?
Yeah, it says May 16th, 2022 Workshop Agenda Item Note Seawall Repair. And then there's, that's the heading. Hopefully you got it.
It's at the very end of it. It looks like this small little.
Oh.
Very end of the.
Yeah, very end of all it.
Okay. Where?
It was at the very end of it. The things that you were given this morning. I think it was just stuck at the end of it. It's just one sheet of paper.
Yeah.
Yep, it's one sheet.
Yeah.
It's right at the end of this one, Dwayne, not that one.
Yeah.
Back one. Yeah.
Your next group, very last sheet.
Okay.
Stuck right back.
Go ahead, I think.
So under the Florida statutes for special assessments, there's some qualifications that we have to have. And this is explaining that we are required to have a method, an assessment methodology report. And in the other documents that you were giving is a contract from Rosetta and Company to prepare that method, that assessment methodology report. So we're going to, we're going to need to approve that when we reconvene the board meeting. And part of that is going to need to be a statement from the engineer that did the inspection, Ruben and Clarkson Consulting, stating that we own the marina, it's a district owned property. And that there is no one property in the district that benefits more than another. It's equal benefit to all the properties in the district for that marina and the repair needed to that marina. They are more than happy to do it. They had asked Foster's Consulting to do it and they weren't comfortable doing it. So then they went to Ruben and Clarkson. They are more than com- comfortable to prepare that statement that we need to meet that qualification of the statute, but they want a fee of $1,000 to do that. So we, we, we have to have it. So that's an additional expense that we have to incur. So I need to give them approval to go ahead and prepare that statement. And then Rosetta and Company will include that statement in their assessment methodology report. And they're charging us $15,000 to prepare that assessment methodology report. Now, the one thing that assessment methodology report is going to do for us is it's going to protect the district if anyone files suit saying, I did not benefit from this repair, therefore I shouldn't have to pay the special assessment. There have been districts that have done these kind of special assessments and they have had legal action by residents saying, I shouldn't have to pay for this. And they did not get this assessment methodology report done. They did not have their T's crossed and their I's dotted. So I think it's important that we make sure we do get this qualifying document done.
So this, I'm sorry. Those $15,000 and $1,000 for the letter, that's all going to be rolled right back into the million five that we're requesting?
Yes, it will. So that, the, the contract is in probably the board packet info for when we reconvene, but there's the contract from Rosetta and Company. The second qualifier from Florida statute is that we have to have a fair and reasonable allocation of the assessment. And that's covered by chapter, by section seven of our charter on how we allocate any of our assessments. So we've got that taken care of. So I just wanted to update everybody on that. Does anybody have any, I, I know you just got this information this morning, so I'm really sorry. Any questions about Rosetta and Company and what their role is and what they're going to provide for us?
Is this who did the survey also?
No.
That was separate, that was a separate cost?
Ruben and Clarkson did the survey, the onsite inspection, right, Dwayne?
Yes. And it's Clark, it's Clarkson, but all, we can.
Oh, sorry.
And that survey also goes back, is rolled back into that amount, right?
The survey was done in 2021. We've already spent that cost.
Yeah, that's what came out of 2021's budget.
Yeah.
When you say survey, are you talking?
The.
Foundry survey, are you talking the engineering?
No. The Ruben Clarkson was the original surveyor that came out and actually did the seawall inspections to see just how bad the seawalls were, the depth of the seawalls, the mud, how far out the slabs and everything else were going to go. That report is in Todd's office and that it's already been bought and paid for. Then I terminated that contract with Clarkson and re-awarded for the specifications and duplication of some of this survey, just to make sure that Clarkson was right. Clarkson, yeah, Clarkson. And then they have actually drawn up the contract that is getting ready to go out for bid if we can get the money. So, but that's what those are. But just listening to what you're saying here with Rosetti, is it, I'm sorry, Rosetta. With today's climate on suits and that kind of stuff, I think it would be well worth the fifth, what, how much 15,000? Protect us if we've had other districts that have gotten sued over that. But I really don't see where not one individual in here would benefit from what we're trying to propose with the marina and the community project. No. But that's my opinion, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, I explained to them that it's really clear that it's an equal benefit to the repair. But like you said, in this environment, it's important to get this done. It also will help with the financing for the banks to know that we've done this methodology. So they know there's no risk. So I think, I think it's a good spend. It's a lot of money, but I think it's a wise spend right now.
I, I agree. Can't see that. Then you go into paragraph two for neighbors.
Okay, neighbors, Giblin and Nickerson Attorneys at Law. I, I want to approve that contract today, but with a caveat that it's pending, pending the review and consent from the district attorney. Neighbors Giblin was needed when we were going down the tax exempt bond financing route. We are required by law to have a bond attorney. So they became part of the conversation right at the beginning. And they've been involved right on through. They've never billed us for their time, but they've attended every conference call that I've had. And it was decided that they would be the ones to prepare our resolution that we will adopt all of the requirements through advertise and post and the public hearing and et cetera, et cetera. And I'm questioning, I know we may have to pay them for the service that they've done, even though we had no contract. That's kind of a gray area. But I questioned with Mark Barnaby this morning why we needed to contract with them and why Blalock Walters couldn't do what they're saying they're going to do for $20,000 since we're no longer going after a tax exempt bond because we don't qualify. Mark thought that was a reasonable ask and he's going to look into it. So he asked that we approve the contract pending his review and consent so that if he does determine that we don't need to contract with them, you know, we just will void the consent because he didn't consent the approval, I mean. So that's a little confusing for everybody, but they were the firm that questioned whether or not we used Statute 197 through once or 170. And I had to push back with them about. push back with them about 170 being the statute we should follow. So I questioned right out of the gate, how much they really understood about what was going on here. And now they're saying that we have to follow another Florida statute as far as our notice and our public hearings, which makes no sense to me at all. Um, versus 170. So I'm back at, you know, with saying, I don't think these guys are going to represent us. So um, I'd like to not, um, contract with them, but, you know, so I know I just confused you guys and I apologize, but um, that agreement is a work in progress and we may not contract with them.
Well, it sounds like if that's the way it's going to go, we're going to save some money there also.
Well, absolutely. Well, you know, Blaylock Walters will bill us, but they're our, our district attorney and they won't, um, I hope they won't charge 20 grand for that.
Mary, did, uh, this attorney come on board with Rosetta? Is that who brought that on board?
They came on, um, I think before Rosetta.
Okay.
They came on like one meeting before, and that was at that meeting, we determined that we probably should go down the assessment methodology route for protection. And then we brought Rosetta on board in the meetings.
Sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So depending on, you know, where we go with that, um, either way, whether we go with them or not, we're, I'm going to be getting a revised timeline of what needs to happen by when, as far as all of the, uh, resolutions and letters and notifications in the paper. And, um, I'll get that out to you as soon as I can. We're going to probably regroup this afternoon based on the email I sent out last night about, um, what neighbors Giblin is, is suggesting for timeline. So we're trying to get something together this afternoon, but we may need to call some special meetings or emergency meetings, quick ones, just to approve items. And so I just wanted to kind of get an understanding of, of, do we have any risks of not having a quorum between now and the end of May?
What's my timeline on calling a special meeting? Uh, what, one, two advertise it three days, two days?
Uh.
Well, if I called an emergency, I can.
Emergency meeting, yeah, you don't. I think you just have to post it on bulletin boards in the website and I don't think. I wish Lori was here. She knows the stuff backwards and frontwards.
Well, I think you're right. If, if it's an emergency meeting, all I have to do is post it on the bulletin boards and your, but it's a special meeting I have to have. I'm stuck on three days, uh, to advertise that. Uh, but I think this is so important for the bonding and the, in the, uh, funding for the C wall that I would almost call an emergency meeting. Is the rest of the board available this week? I'm, I'm assuming you're going to have some kind of a response back today, Mary.
I certainly hope so. We're getting together this afternoon again.
So with that, I'll just go ahead and call the emergency meetings sometime when I get response back from Mary.
This week?
Yeah, this week.
Towards the end of the week, I mean?
I'm sorry?
Towards the end of the week?
No, I'm hopefully like tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Is everybody available this week?
Yes, they are.
Not one.
Okay.
Yes, they are.
All right.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Uh, not, uh, Ross, shoot. Louis won't be here on Wednesday.
Okay.
So they'll have me tomorrow or Thursday. If not.
Right. All right. So that's kind of that update. Um, you want to go right into the proposals?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we got four proposals back, um, from the banks. And they're kind, there's kind of a little recap sheet there. Um, I also have got some numbers here that I can share with you, but um, Bank of Tampa is, um, probably the worst one at 6.75%. So I would set that one right aside. Um, and then the other two banks, um, South State offered us both a 15 and a 20 year term. Um, I really, I don't want to go down the 20 year route and I don't think we get enough benefit considering what it will cost us in interest to spread it out another five years. Regions Bank has got the best rate. Um, the only caveat with Regions Bank is they want us to move our bank account relationship to them from First Horizon.
Frontier.
I am not opposed to doing that, considering three days after Iberia Bank, uh, merged with First Horizon. First Horizon was brought out by TD Bank. And so in another six months, they're going to be TD Bank. Um, so moving the bank accounts to Regions, um, I don't see as an issue. I was a little frustrated with First Horizon and Iberia anyway. Um, they do have a branch on Cortez. Uh, it's about five miles away and they have a branch on Manatee. So they do have branches close to us when we need to do our banking. Um, deposits.
Is it a deal breaker if we don't do it? We don't move it there?
I'm sorry, what Todd?
Is it a deal breaker if we don't move it there?
It was one of the requirements of the financing. Yeah.
Offer a percentage rating of 4.11 versus that 6.75. I don't see where that's really, that's going to save us, uh, what, 400? 458,000 in yen.
Yeah.
Our money.
Yeah, um, the, um, the other thing with Regions is, uh, the banks require a debt service reserve, and this is a very odd amount. But it's basically a, a reserve that they keep in case we miss a payment. But that's not even a full payment. So, but, um, they're the lowest reserve requirement. They are the highest as far as their estimated cost for their bank council. But they're right online with everybody else on closing cost estimate. Um, they, all three of the banks are requiring a, a payment on November 1st of 2022. It's not a full payment, but they are requesting a partial payment. Um, they are the lowest partial payment request. Um, as far as actual funds, estimated funds at closing, they are probably right in the middle at 1,366 um, versus South State, which is 1,369. So we're talking about $3,000 whoopee.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, the, and also with Regions Bank, the amount of special assessment that we will need to have to, uh, make these payments is $99.15 per single lot. South State's 15 year term would require a single lot assessment of $104.65. And then, uh, Bank of Tampa is 118. So it keeps that special assessment under a hundred dollars if we go with Regions. So, um, what's everybody's thoughts? I mean, I think it's between South State and Regions, um, they're $5 apart on assessment. And we wouldn't have to move our bank accounts with South State.
Well, personally, I don't see the big deal on moving the, uh, accounts to Regions.
I don't either.
Especially for that interest rate.
Uh, like a hundred dollars per lot, per parcel versus any of the others.
Yeah. Now, um, under Regions Bank, it does say that the rate lock-in is only guaranteed through June 15th. We got them to extend that to June 22nd. So if we can get back on our track of having our, um, public hearing on the 20th, if we've got all of the loan documents in a really good shape by then, um, we can close on June 22nd and the interest rate lock-in will be extended through June 22nd. For that 4.11%.
Oh. I have a couple of questions. And if this is June 22nd, have the, uh, public hearing.
June 20th is the public hearing.
Okay, uh, uh, the contract for the bids for the C wall itself ends May 25th.
Yep.
On how, no, I guess I'm going to have to go, Todd's going to have to go back and see if we can't get that extended until June 20th?
I, I think, um, we can keep that without extending it if we give them a down payment before May 25th. I think, um, 20% of the contract amount, if paid by May 25th, will lock in that bid.
Yep.
Um, I don't think they're willing to extend it if I, if I'm remembering.
And that down payment comes from the 386 that we already had set aside?
It will come, yes. It will come out of the general fund, I'm sorry.
Out of the 330,000 that we had, uh, set aside for the last five years, um, that 190,000 will come out of that money and not out of the loan.
And then when the ba- when the loan is financed, we'll pay it back. It'll go back yet.
Yeah. Wow.
That's a big increase just from what we thought we were starting off with.
What, what do you mean, Russell?
Didn't we, didn't we first originally look at this at, at, uh, I think three and a half, so it would, something like that.
It was under four.
There, so it's.
Oh, the interest rate?
Yeah, the interest, well, that's because of the federal.
Yeah.
And it's going to get worse if we don't lock this in. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be up around that 6.75 that we got from Bank of Tampa. And then, you know, it's.
So we bring this back to the, uh, the meeting, okay?
Uh, and there was nothing, I'm sorry, the letter that's supposed to go out to the, uh, homeowners that is going to be based on what the attorney in the review is?
Yeah, but, but we're going to, we'll have more information on that later today. If we're not going to, um, contract with neighbors Giblin, then, um, either Prag or Blaylock Walters will draft that letter. At this point, I could probably draft that letter. I mean, I don't think it has to be anything. There's certain qualifications, pieces of information that are required to be in it. Um, I did get a draft of a, a property owner letter from Prag and it was like four, five pages long and it was insane. So um, I can tone that down considerably. But, um, I want to wait. I mean, we're paying them to do it. So um, I'd like them to take a second stab. And I already told Wendell that it needs to be a one-page letter. So figure out how to get everything required into a one-page letter because anything more than that is, is not going to work.
Mary?
Yeah.
On the spreadsheet where you compare the three quotes and the, right in the middle where it's in the closing cost where it says bank counsel?
Mm-hmm.
I don't understand what that is.
Um, I think it's just, you know, the closing, the, the, um, title and all that stuff, all the original closing costs. I'm not really sure, Louis, to be honest, every single one of them had a bank counsel involvement. Uh, Regions was the most expensive and these are estimates. So maybe it'll come in. You know, it's just like any other closing on a, on a loan, you have estimates of closing costs.
But it's not, it's not the same thing that we were talking about hiring neighbors, gibbling and nickers.
No, it is not.
Okay.
No, it is not.
So it's a closing cost of some nature?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just go with the first three items on the workshop item?
Uh, we did.
Review the proposal, review the letter, which we'll get later on and the bond financing.
Yep. So we're going to move forwards with Regions. Is everybody good with that?
Well.
We have to bring it back.
Yeah, don't we have to bring that back to the board and then we'll?
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll vote to approve it.
Right now is probably, yeah.
I would agree.
That's the direction I would head.
All right.
Any other discussions on the bonding?
Oh, uh, you said there's, the public hearing has to be the 20th of June?
Yes.
And, and then the 25th is the contract signed in for the.
25th of May.
May.
Oh, okay.
That's the absolute earliest we can do the public hearing because we have to get the letter out to the property owners 30 days in advance. That's why I'm panicking about this letter that I didn't have today that I was supposed to have.
Right.
Um, because we need to get that in the mail this week in order to hold that June 20th public hearing. And if we can't hold to that date, then we can't close on the 22nd, which jeopardizes our interest rate. So that's why I said we may need to have some emergency meetings here.
Okay.
All right.
Any other discussion? Sounds like you did a lot of work there, Mary. Thank you very much.
Yes.
All righty, we'll get there.
Okay, uh, heading for the next item is the, uh, to abolish the beautification standing committee and that was myself. And, uh, what I wanted to do is discuss the solving the beautification standing committee is all members have resigned and became a club, which are going to be, uh, seamless on raising funds for the park and other projects and assisting other clubs and organizations. Not a lot of discussion about it. Uh, the board members have resigned. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and just abolish that. And if everybody approves of that, I'll bring that back next meeting, you know, on a PP 38. Any discussion?
No.
Nope. I'm, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are we going to discuss a letter date changing or updating the PP eight? Which covers the beautification.
But let me get to my next item.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, so that's, I'll bring that back as a, uh, PP 38 to actually dissolve that.
Hey, Dwayne?
Yes.
Um, we have, when we reconvene the board meeting, we have an item there that says establish the new, um, subcommittee. So don't we have to abolish the old committee before we can establish the new one? So
that's what I just did.
No, but you, you said you're going to bring it back to another board meeting to make it official. I think we need to make it official today so that we can also make the treasure barn, the new standing committee official today. Otherwise, both have to be next board meeting.
Not necessarily. I, I can abolish, I can, uh, recommend the abolishment of the standing committee, uh, for the beautification standing committee. And I can also establish a second standing committee.
Oh, you're right.
Treasure barn and then go right back and approve that, which is already on the agenda.
Mm-hmm. You're right. I apologize.
Any other discussion? Okay, uh, my second, I, or I guess the fifth item is to establish the treasure barn as a standing committee. And, uh, as it was discussed at the joint trailer states fire control district and the trailer states park and recreation district on May 3rd, uh, it was agreed that the treasure barn, uh, would be set up as a standing committee under the Board of Trustees. Uh, with that, uh, I have developed the PP eight, uh, which is the treasure barn committee charge. It identifies the purpose, the authorization for expenditures for the funds, the meeting, uh, dates. There, the way they're going to hold their meetings. Um, that the chairman, uh, I'm sorry, the officers duties, which includes the chair, vice chair, secretary, treasurer, you know, what the organization, uh, is about.
Will they meet on the standard meeting dates and stuff that, uh, that they were supposed to? Or is that, is that pretty standard?
Say that again?
The meeting dates and everything?
Well, what we're trying to do is, uh, in fact, let me, what did I put in there? In fact, let me, what did I put in there?
Stammers?
Yeah, regular meetings of treasure barn shall be held on a fixed schedule and must uh adopt a month, day, date, and time.
Okay.
Normally, they meet on a Saturday, uh. I think it was the third Saturday, fourth, sorry, I forgot what it was. Uh. But that date is going to be determined. Once they are established as a committee, those meeting days will be posted. In the newspaper as well as on the boards here, and that'll be established.
Dwayne, I have some recommended changes for you to consider.
Okay.
Um, on, under meetings, on A, uh, you have the committee shall provide the office manager the scheduled meeting dates for publication.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I'd like to see more of the communication between the committee and the liaison. And versus going around the liaison to anybody else. I think we need to make sure whoever is assigned as the liaison is the first point of contact. Um, right now, as, you know, just like the contracts that I have for like the church. You know, they talk to me, I get the room reservations, I give them to Lori, they're always working with me. I would suggest that the committee provide the trustee liaison the scheduled meetings, and they control making sure that things are done.
Okay.
Just to solidify that relationship as much as possible.
So I'm just gonna replace the office manager with the uh appointed?
Trustee.
Trustee liaison.
Yep, that's what I would suggest.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and there's a couple of other places in here where I think it needs to be the, the trustee liaison, um, like I said, to really solidify that relationship.
Okay, I'll go ahead and review that and see where it says office manager. In fact, I think I'd see it on the second page.
Mm-hmm.
Copy yourself. Now, there's only two spots in there, I think, that says office manager.
Um. Under the secretary's duties.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it needs to say the treasure barn secretary will provide the secretary trustee, otherwise it gets really confusing. Um. And as far as providing to them a copy of current bylaws, I think as a subcommittee of the board. They have to follow the bylaws of the board. We, we, they don't have bylaws of their own standalone. Um, the. I, I, I'm pretty sure that they don't have their own, they follow ours as our subcommittee.
Yeah, it, it can go either way, uh, cause their bylaws that I've already read are pretty much mirror the charge, um, but I probably on their. Uh, bylaws, we should say that it includes uh that they must follow the Board of Trustees.
Yep.
Policies, procedures.
Okay. Um, and then, you know, basically, the uh room reservations and everything go through the liaison. Just like they do for contracts, um, and then go to the Board Secretary for processing. Um, that's just, again, um, my suggestion that we really solidify this liaison's responsibility and relationship. Um, but that may be overkill. I, that's up to everybody else, too. That's just my suggestion.
So what I will do is take this uh PP eight, I'll make those changes and bring that back to the next board meetings. Uh, although we can go ahead and approve the uh standing committee as it is.
Yes.
I had one question as to.
The um, under the treasurer's responsibilities.
Yeah.
Um, the treasurer doesn't really need to maintain complete finances. They do need to, you know, make sure they have a record of the deposits that they've made, um, but TJ can run a report for them. As often as they want to write off QuickBooks, once we establish the accounts, that will give the treasurer a report of exactly everything. That that person can just. Reconcile maybe, or reprove, but um, I'm just trying to save the treasurer some time and effort. Because all of that information is gonna be on QuickBooks and we can just give her a report, um, if that's. So that they, they don't have to maintain a completely separate set of finances.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I, what I've seen from the uh treasurer's reports and everything, they keep excellent. Balances that could match up with the uh QuickBooks.
Yep, you're right, absolutely, okay.
I, I'm.
I wanna make sure they know that there's a report.
Go on records and then balance it with the QuickBooks through TJ's office or.
Yeah, maybe we just change it to say that.
Just compare the two.
Yeah, they'll get a monthly report and that they can validate. How about that?
Okay. Well, I thought I had that pretty well set up, but I guess I didn't.
Dwayne, can I ask a question to clarify? You're gonna bring this back to the next workshop or next board meeting?
Next workshop.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it'll have to be revised again.
Okay.
Was there any other uh items that?
The one question I had was a minimum of four members. Should there, should it be five? Cause then your quorum's three and. You know, I'm just throwing that out there.
For them.
Yeah, right now, I think, you know, I don't have a response for them, but I think there's only four that are gonna be here.
Your quorum with four would be three.
Yeah.
Five would be three also.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know. I mean, I don't know that it's that important.
I might have to get back with them to see just how many board members that they'd actually have, but.
Then you got tie votes and all that stuff, uh.
Yeah.
With an odd number.
I'll go back and ask them on that.
So you'll bring that back to the June fourth meeting?
That'll, I'll change this uh PP eight when we get that discussed. Any other discussions? Okay, the next item I had there was the uh multiple property owners, and I think I forgot to bring in one piece of paper. Uh. There was another club that had brought it up, and I got to looking at it. Um, right now, in our uh policies and procedures and charter and all that, there is no limit on the number of houses. That an individual can own. Uh, when I did some research, there was one uh family that had eleven homes in here. There was another one had eight. Uh, that, there was nothing in there that prevented a company from coming in and buying homes. So I thought we should start taking a look at that if we want to put a limit on the number of homes that a uh owner can own in the process. And of course, we would have to look at going back and grandfathering those people that already have the houses. Uh, on a certain date that they can only have whatever number we decide on that. Um, I'd like to have some discussion on what everybody else feels.
Totally support it, I think.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think obviously it, it's. The park gets inordinate. I shouldn't add inordinate, that's wrong, but it gets a high, very high percentage of rental properties when individuals own multiple properties, and I don't think that's the best for the park.
That's something what also I was looking at, too, is these uh Airbnbs and the DBROs. I really wanted to stop that, cause I think we have, what, eleven of them in here now? And if we keep going that way, they could alternate that, we would have a nightmare on it.
Yep.
But it also includes, uh, when we come to the elections, uh, that one, you know, those people that have multiple homes have multiple votes, and that could almost sway a vote. And that was another concern that I had.
How, how do they have multiple votes? I guess I don't understand.
One vote per house. So if you have eleven homes, you can vote eleven times.
I didn't, I didn't think that was the case.
It is.
I would question.
Because I was not able to vote twice. I have two homes in here.
Yeah, I went back to the attorney and clarified that, and it's. For him, but I will go back and clarify that again. But.
But.
I asked that question to the election board whenever I did.
So did I. And I was told that you can't vote more than one time in the election.
Good, good. I will go back and verify that, just to make sure I've got my stories straight.
Yeah.
But I do wanna really work on this policy, so it might not be the next meeting, but it's coming, hell.
So, what are you thinking is the correct number?
Well, I uh, just looking at other park and recreations, they're limiting it to two.
Mm-hmm.
No more than two homes.
Under one name.
Under one name.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the one they're living in and an additional, or? The one they're living in and two additional?
Anything you have your name on.
Yeah, anything, alright. That's for us, you know, whatever goes for on the side.
I, I don't have a problem with that, cause most, well, you two own more than one.
Right.
So I mean, here's, y'all are just two prime examples.
I'm, I'm fine with this. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna see a, a company come in and buy a whole street or whatever.
Right.
Decide to start renting it out.
And that is happening at TriPar.
Yep.
So, I would, I really wanna prevent that.
TriPar already has a limit, don't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yeah. And that's because there was a company coming in and buying up several homes and re-renting them right back out. So I will bring that into uh another PP thirty-eight. No, uh, yeah, I'll bring in this another PP thirty-eight, and I'll try to write up some kind of a uh documentation for a policy on the number of houses.
By the June fourth?
No, it, it's gonna be, I, I wanna get through the bonding and everything else before I start tackling this one here. What is the next meeting? That'd be.
June fourth.
June fourth.
June fourth, I don't wanna do it on the June twentieth, maybe by July fifth. Is that our next, July fifth is the next meeting after that?
Yeah.
You know, I'm supposed to be using that.
Uh, I know, I can't do a calendar on my fingers.
That's why they gave you toes. Okay, so I will bring that up to the, one of these next meetings. Uh, the last item we had on here was the insurance coverage for the uh Trailer State Fire Control District, Mary?
Yeah, I got it.
One, one more.
I'm sorry. So the updates to disaster plan PP twenty that was on the agenda. Did we, we moved that to the board meeting, and so this is, this has been completed?
No, the uh motion for the changes as amended was already approved in the board meeting.
You just have to give them minutes.
Workshop item that was on there can be deleted off.
Okay. Just wanna make sure, thank you, sorry.
Okay, Mary?
Okay, um, I received, I sent out for quotes for both liability insurance and flood insurance for the building when we take it over on July first. I got a flood insurance quote, and I wasn't planning on adding this to today's agenda, but I was notified that we have to um. Approve the insurance coverage and then it doesn't go into effect for another thirty days, so in order for it to go into effect for the July first acquisition date. I felt like uh we needed to workshop it today so I can approve it. Um, on the June fourth and get it in effect when we take over the building on July first. Um, the building will be insured, the quote I have is an insurance coverage on the building of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Um, and contents insurance of a hundred thousand dollars. Both claims would have a deductible of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And the annual premium for that insurance is eleven thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. Which is about half what the fire department was paying. When they went in and did their own insurance, and now we're going through Florida League of Cities for this. So it was um, what I thought, more than adequate coverage for half the cost. Um, so, I would like to bring this forward to the June fourth meeting for approval, so we can secure this insurance and have it in effect. When we do the quick claim deed and take over the building on July first.
I'm sorry, it was four hundred and sixty-nine thousand?
For the building. And a hundred thousand dollars for contents.
Contents.
Which is way more than we need, so I can um try to get that down to see if that, how much that saves us in premium.
When you say way less than what the fire department, what do you mean by that?
The fire department's annual cost for flood insurance with no coverage, just the building alone and no contents coverage was twenty-three thousand dollars a year.
Wow.
We did not go through Florida League of Cities, that wasn't available to us. Now going through Florida League of Cities and having them negotiate the flood insurance. Um, through the same company that provides all of our other flood insurance in the district, um, right. Um, we're able to get it for eleven thousand six hundred and twelve dollars.
Hmm. Wow.
Is that the only type of insurance coverage we need down there?
I need liability insurance, and I haven't gotten that quote back. But I imagine that will be less as well going through Florida League of Cities.
How do you secure liability coverage when you don't know what it's gonna be used for? I would think that would have a lot of influence on the, on the premium. I mean, we gotta get it. I understand we gotta get it, but I don't, I, I'm just curious how that works.
No, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is covering everything, is covering the building, but if we did rent out. Any portion of the building, that insurance would then be picked up on their insurance.
We, we would cover liability insurance if anybody fell in the parking lot, because it's impossible for us to know, did they fall? Going to the business that's leasing it, or to go to the sale in the back from the treasure barn. Um, what we would do is, I, I did find the quote from um Florida League of Cities for liability insurance, it's two thousand twenty-nine, which again is half. What the fire department was paying, they were over five thousand. What will happen, though, if we lease the front of the building is whoever we lease it to will have to carry their own contents insurance. Um, for whatever they put in the building, so it'll be like renters insurance if you're renting an apartment. They're gonna have to get their own contents insurance. That's why I'm thinking I can lower this hundred grand of contents insurance, because we basically can say zero to contents insurance, because. Um, most of what's gonna be on the backside is gonna be the resale items, which, do we wanna insure those?
The generators would be part of the building?
Yeah.
And not.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, that's building. So we can leave it alone at the eleven-six, or I can try to get it down a little bit by reducing the contents insurance, but. I'm gonna need to bring something back at the June fourth meeting for approval, so we can secure the insurance and meet the thirty-day waiting period before it goes into effect. I wasn't aware of the thirty-day waiting period, that's why I'm kind of pushing this through.
Well, from what I can see, this is something we're gonna have to put in place just because of the quick. Quick clean deed, that's gonna be coming over in July first anyway.
Yeah, yes.
My opinion is I would leave the hundred thousand content, contents, because we don't know what the contents are gonna be at this time. I think it's. Rather be over insured than trying to be scrounging for insurance under pressure, because. What we decide to do with it.
Most likely be reevaluating at a later date.
Exactly, exactly. Upon renewal, we can make adjustments.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Was that the last item?
That's it.
Just to make sure.
Last item.
Anything else, Mary?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, with that, could I have the resident comments?
Sandy Stevens, eighteen fourteen Minnesota Avenue. Um, I looked back and um about the booking of the room, okay? Uh, we, we, we did all, we rebooked the rooms under the beautification committee in March. So I think we should be all right with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was a club or the committee?
Oh.
Club. Okay, any other resident comments?
Are you taking online comments?
Yep.
Okay, Dottie Dear Wester, eighteen oh four Ohio Avenue. I have a couple of different comments. As far as the treasure barn, I support Mary's recommendation to use the liaison as a liaison. That makes sense. I think that avoids, I hate to use the word conflict, but issues maybe down the road. I would recommend on PP eight to include a section on the roles and duties of a liaison. I didn't see anything on there. I think that helps whichever trustee is assigned as liaison it also, to define that, and it also helps the committee to look to that person for guidance and input, et cetera. I also recommend that when the treasure barn holds their meetings, that those are Zoom meetings as it is for the trustee meetings and that the agenda and minutes are posted on the website as it is for the trustee meetings, except we don't get minutes, but the agenda is there. I think that will help the community to be more involved, especially with Zoom. The issue about the board members, I support, and I forgot who made the discussion, but three or five board members, the odd number helps avoid voting ties and issues that may come up as that, and I think that's just good management of a board as well. I support the limiting of how many homes an owner can own in the park. I agree with the conversation that the park seems to be going in a direction with a, with lots of homes being owned by one company or a person or family as well as a VRBO issues that we're, we're facing now. So I agree with supporting the limit of homes that should be owned. Probably to two, that live in one or rent one kind of concept. And as far as the election, I also was under the understanding that they could only vote one time. I don't know if that's for all elections, but I know, I don't, I know that I was told that they could only vote one time, not based on the number of properties that they own. And Gordon is here, he's on my computer, so he has comments too, if that's okay.
Sure. Gordon Elton, eighteen oh four Ohio Avenue. Good morning. I was also told by the county elections office that you could only vote for trustee election for one property, no matter how many you own.
Good. I will recheck that.
I had a couple of questions on the bonds, whether those were taxable interest or tax exempt interest on those bonds. If it's tax exempt, the rate should be lower than if it's taxable. I didn't hear that mentioned.
It's taxable, Gordon.
Okay. Did you, were you able to explore whether tax exempt was an option?
We didn't qualify for tax exempt. I was told to qualify. I can't remember the exact reason, but there was.
Okay. I was not aware that we wouldn't qualify. Okay. But you checked it out. That's the answer. Yeah. Okay. I have more questions here. I'm trying to find them. The the thing about deleting the beautification committee, it's not as simple as just saying you're gonna take action to delete it, you have to revise certain documents. I didn't hear the revision of the documents mentioned, but it's either in the rules and regulations or the bylaws or, or multiple places that would have, the references might have to be deleted to, to, you know, truly affect deleting or eliminating that committee. Oh, and Mary, are there prepayment penalties in this loan, or could we pay it off on a different schedule?
There are, and they differ by bank. I'm trying to find. So I can tell you what regions is.
It's, it's the stiffest one.
It's the stiffest one, yes, I agree. I'll take those twenty-two, five.
No, no, the prepayment.
Percentage, I'm wrong, right?
Percentages that decrease over, over time.
Let's see, prepayment penalties, if you pay it off in the first two years, it's five percent. In the third or fourth, four percent. If they're basically, there's no more prepayment penalties beyond year eight. I don't see us having the cash flow to prepay.
Right, but where I was, what I was thinking about on a prepayment would be to refinance when, and if interest rates go back down, it might pencil out to refinance the debt and save some money. And so that, that prepayment penalty is a key to whether it would save money or not. The I think that, the other thing, I also support the, the concept of limiting how many properties a particular owner can own. But the idea that it would be very common to own two properties at once because many people that would buy a different property in trailer states before they had sold the one they were currently living in, even if it's not intended to be kept as a rental, the timing of purchases and sales might result in people owning two properties for relatively short period of time. The other challenge that that limit might place is if Dottie and I own one property and then I own one in my own name and she owns one in her name, those are different ownerships. So can that be addressed? I don't know what the legalities would be or how you can address potential manipulations of the ownership rules to effectively own more than whatever the limit is. That's the, that's one of the challenges I could see coming as a result of this.
Yep, me too.
And I don't, I don't have an answer for you either. So anyway, that's my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? And with that, I'm going to adjourn the workshop at eleven oh nine. Would the board like to take a five-minute recess before we reopen the board meeting? Okay, please turn off your microphones. So the workshop is done. That is done.
What are we bringing back?
Do I have everybody?
Test, test.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna reconvene the board of trustees meeting for May sixteenth at eleven eighteen. Okay, the first item we have there is adopt the resolution of the C-Wall. Mary?
That agenda item will be moved to an emergency meeting because it's gonna need to include the bank and the terms. So I'm going to go back to Wendell and see if we can renegotiate the prepayment penalties from regions to see if we can kind of make them not so stringent. I don't know if they'll be willing to change them. Do you want me to do that, or do you want to go with the fifteen-year at South State, which has no prepayment penalties?
I would prefer that we go back and try to knock that down, that prepayment schedule before we do that. What's the rest of the board feel?
Yes, I agree.
If I'm unsuccessful getting them to, to revise those prepayment penalties, are we still gonna go with regions or are we gonna go with South State? I just need to know that for the resolution.
Well, for the difference in the interest rate, I think we should stay with. I just lost them. Region, thank you.
Okay.
With the rest of the board?
Yes, totally.
I will do my best.
Because that's close to what, four hundred and fifty thousand bucks difference in the interest rates.
Good guess.
Close, close. And then the, I'm sorry, is there anything else on that? You'll get back to me hopefully today, if not tomorrow, on, so I can set up the emergency meeting.
Yes.
All righty. And then the approval letter for the property owners, that will be discussed.
That'll happen at the same meeting. We'll. That'll happen at the same meeting. We'll, we'll take care of both of those agenda items at that meeting.
And the third item we had was engage Rosetta and Company.
Yes, I make a motion that we authorize Rosetta and Company to prepare an assessment methodology as required to obtain financing for the Marina Seawall repair and other community development projects.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor approving the motion as read, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Do I get to ask a question?
Sure.
Sandy's not on.
Who?
Sandy Semenich is not on.
Sandy, are you with us? She what? All right, I still have a without the motion is passed. The next time we had was engage neighbors Giblin, Nichols, Nicholson. Counsel, that's gonna be taken off?
No, I'm gonna read it as it sits here and get a second, and then I'm gonna amend the motion to include some caveats.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize neighbors Giblin and Nicholson to represent the district as special counsel for the acquisition of financing to repair the Marina Seawall and other community development projects. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Now I'd like to amend that motion. And I would like to amend it to add pending a review and consent from district attorney at the end.
Mary, could you please repeat that?
So that the amended motion says authorize neighbors Giblin and Nicholson to represent the district as special counsel for the acquisition of financing to repair the Marina Seawall and other community development projects pending a review and consent from the district attorney.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Russell needs to second the amended.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving, in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion is passed. And the last item we have here is to establish the treasure barn as a standing committee.
Yep, I make a motion that we establish the new treasure barn standing committee as discussed on May 3rd, 2022, and during the workshop portion of today's meeting.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor approving the motion as read, please say aye. Those against, nay. Motion is passed. Jeez, that was quick. Holy moly. Okay, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 11:25.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please turn off your microphones.